Although, yeah, trying, trying. Yeah. Well, they served, you have some game numbers. He served. He served nine years, but, but I don't know how many people he killed, right? Yeah, yeah. So, he made forty year, forty year. Well, yeah, that's the. Yeah. They clap for it. Now, I'm working with them too. They don't clap for it, you know, at all, but they were so grateful that we would come. We brought food to them, we brought, we brought stuff like that. Yeah, they were great. A lot of them. They changed a lot. He used to be a monk, he used to be a monk and he used to be a magistrate or a judge. But. Once I was shooting a lot, we did Guatemala last year. I think I was first time in Guatemala. Yeah, Gu- Guatemala where I went was. I always asked you to go to California. Yeah. Audrey, yeah. I told, I told her. They put a house on it. Uh, she's like, well, you're going there by yourself? I'm like, no, I, I was, I had to retire down. Like, I, I love the way of life, I love the way of life, I love the people. Really. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Look, I stayed at the Hotel California.
California?
Hotel California, we checked in there and we left. Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. When we were there, Hotel California.
Oh, yeah.
And I, he was like, you checked? Yeah. So, he called down this one day, and I, they, they went back and pulled a seat right back. And afterward, I was like, oh, you complained about how much I don't see? He said, yeah, yours didn't. I said, yeah, I didn't have a toilet seat in my head. I said, it was just a little lower. You know, now, like. Quality, like an air conditioner. No? Well, then, there's something out in the country people are setting on. Is there? If you find out, let me know. That'd be interesting. Okay. That's what I saw. I remember it. Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Is that big? I got this on Chihuahua last year.
Now, there's Chihuahua state and there's Chihuahua city.
Are people nice there? What the dog is? Those are dogs, man. A Chihuahua dog? Your husband does?
I know.
Oh, my God.
Hey, how are you?
Good way.
I'm fine.
Good guy. No way! I know the name. Okay, okay. Graduating, Daisy. No, you get right here. I have enough. I was off to graduate.
You remember when?
Yes. Little guy. Yeah. Yeah, I kind of. I, I have a paper. That's what I like, I like. Yeah, he, right, right. And I'm proud of him. So, are you seeing a few more kids? That was long, small. Really? What's happening? Hey, how you doing? What are you, what are you doing out here?
Tell your family I said hi.
Good evening. I'd like to call this Rockingham County School Board meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five, and we will begin with a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Motion passes four zero? Five zero, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, um, next on our list is our moment of silence if you would like to join us. Thank you. At this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have some recognitions, beginning with the Inspire Award. The Inspire Award was created for R C P S stakeholders to recognize a teacher or staff member who has impacted their life, inspired their learning, or made a distinct impression on their child. Nominations are accepted from students, parents, student teachers, classroom volunteers, and community members. The R C P S Inspire Award is made possible with financial support from the Rockingham Education Foundation and DuPont Community Credit Union, and our, we have two of those tonight, I believe. Our first up is a student, Julia Iwanaki, who is presenting to Mr. Klein, who is a sixth grade teacher at Monavideo Middle School. If you would come forward, please.
My name is Julia, and I feel like Mr. Klein is a great teacher. He encour- he encourages us to do our best, such as encouraging us to beat others in ninety-nine math. We have a variety of options to do our work by working with partners, groups, and working by ourselves in class every day. And I like the different options. When we come into class and when we leave, Mr. Klein always gives us a high five or a fist bump. This shows that he cares about us. I really like being in Mr. Klein's class.
Thank you.
Next on our list is, I believe the student is not here, but we do have the principal, who is going to be presenting to Mr. Stover, a science teacher at East Rock High School. If you could come forward, please.
Good evening. Yes, I am not Eva, so I'm going to be speaking as I, but that obviously is not me, but it's, it's well written. I wanted to take a moment and give you a round of applause for how well you teach your classes. Your direct instruction and assistance has helped me so much in your classes. I remember that we would ask you unanswerable questions, yet you still find a way to give us an answer. Your patience and understanding gave me the courage to ask for help when I struggle, which has improved my learning performance in such a good way. Because of you, I, I look outside the box in daily activities. Because of your support, I am a stronger learner than I was before. I hope you continue being a teacher because you genuinely teach your students. What I've noticed was that their performance in your class is way better than in most classes. I have never left your class without learning something new. I'm filled with gratitude that I was able to be one of your students, Eva Ayala.
Thank you all for nominating teachers. That's one of our favorite things, is to hear all of the wonderful things about our, our teachers and staff. Uh, the next thing on our agenda tonight, our public comments, of which there are none, and so we will move on to our consent agenda for the evening. Or. Oh, I'm sorry. I just jumped right past something. I apologize. We're going back to recognitions, and we do have a teacher recognition tonight, and Ms. Karen Ritter is presenting that. If you could come forward, please.
I was joking with her because this is actually the third award that she's gotten this year. So, um, good evening, Chair Horst, Dr. Shiflett, and school board members. Uh, my name is Karen Ritter, and I am the proud principal of Linville Edum Elementary School. I am pleased to recognize Mrs. Jen Dove, a third grade teacher at Linville Edum Elementary, for receiving the Amplify two thousand twenty-five Science of Reading Star Award for being the writing whiz. This award applauds an educator who is integrating writing instruction with the science of reading and cultivating confident writers through innovative practices. Mrs. Dove has been a fellow this year for the Goyan Literacy Foundation, where she has been meeting with other educators to share her classroom successes with reading and writing instruction. Most recently, Mrs. Dove was also named a Nessie Teacher of the Year two thousand twenty-five, recognizing her use of research-aligned practices in the classroom. Mrs. Dove was introduced to the science of reading four years ago, and after one year of applying science of reading principles, she saw a dramatic shift in both her teaching and student outcomes. Mrs. Dove says, "For the first time in thirteen years, I truly understood how to teach literacy in a way that reached my students. It was empowering, transformative, and reignited my passion for teaching reading the way students learn best. We at Linville Edum are so proud of Mrs. Dove and privileged to have her at school. Please join me in congratulating her for this amazing accomplishment."
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Board members, do I hear a motion for approval?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Board members, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Motion passes five zero. Onto action items. We have a couple of those this evening. Mr. Moyers, you're presenting both of those, so if you could come forward. First is on athletic trainer services, and then the next is a bid recommendation for partial re-roofing of the J. Hillard School.
Good evening, Chair Horst, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. Uh, so we put out requests for proposals for athletic trainer services. Um, we received a proposal from one qualified offer. We would like to recommend the approval of Centerra Medical Center to provide those services for the coming year, starting July first, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Moyers.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend awarding the con- contract for athletic trainer services for East Rockingham High School and Spotswood High School to the most qualified offer for, offerer as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Hearing that recommendation, board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Any discussion?
I have a question, and forgive me if we've talked about this when it was information, but why, it's just East Rockingham and Spotswood. Wha- what about Broadway and T A?
We have employees that work in those two schools.
You have employees, okay, and so we just contract this out?
The other two.
Okay. And this is not new?
No, this is not new. This would be the seventh year we've been doing this.
It's been going on for years and years? Seven, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, board members? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of following the recommendation to award the contract for athletic training services, uh, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes five zero. Onto your next item.
Okay, so we had released bids for the partial re-roof at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. We, uh, sent bid packages to three firms. We received three responses, and we recommend awarding the bid to Baker Roofing in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Moyers. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend awarding the bid for the partial re-roofing at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School to the lowest bidder as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the bid for partial re-roofing at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School to the lowest bidder.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Board members, any questions or comments?
I do. Um, when will this be done? When will this be done?
That I'm not positive of, but if we're bidding it now, it'll be this summer.
Okay, and so, this may seem a silly question. Does this come out of this year's budget or next year's?
I would need to check with Steve on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes? All those opposed say no. Motion passes 5-0. That concludes our action items for this evening. We have several information items tonight, the first of which is the federal program grant application for the 2025-26 school year, and that is being presented by Ms. Michelle Judd.
Good evening, Chair Horst, members of the school board, and Dr. Shiflett. On your agenda for information are the applications for five federal grant programs: Title I Part A, Title II Part A, Title III Part A, Title IV Part A, and Title I Part C. These are all federal grants within the Every Student Succeed Act of 2015, and are based on funding which is level to that of our current school year. Once initial applications are approved by the Virginia Department of Education and final allocations are released in the fall, I will be amending these applications with the updated amounts, and will send them back to the Department of Ed for approval. The purpose of Title I is to provide all children with the opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education as schools work to close the achievement gaps. The 2025-26 Title I Part A grant has been based on the amount of approximately $2,760,000. This is our largest grant. This application reflects approximately 5,518 students who are enrolled in our 15 Title I elementary schools. 2,412 of those students are classified as low-income. The February 4, 2025 Free and Reduced Report that came from our Food Service Department was used to determine Title I status this year. Funds in the Title I app are primarily allocated to the salaries and benefits of reading support staff. And for 2025-26, this will be 18 teachers and eight teacher assistants. The reading staff that are funded by Title I are above and beyond the staff that we fund locally, and our local program is known as our TLC program. We're also using Title I funds to fund strong-start staff. You may be aware, we've got two programs. Each program has a teacher and two assistants. We will use funds to fund one behavior specialist. A small amount goes for conference education and training, compensated service for homeless transportation drivers. I don't know if you're aware, but when we have students who qualify for McKenna-Vento homeless services, we try to provide them transportation to their school of origin so that they don't have to keep changing schools when they're in a temporary housing situation. So, we can use Title I funds to pay our drivers. We use Title I funds for materials and supplies for math and reading remediation and parent and family engagement activities. It's anticipated that all 15 elementary schools will benefit from Title I funds and services. We are required to provide equitable services to private school students. Eastern Mennonite Elementary School and Redeemer Classical School will participate in the Title I program next year, and they'll use their allocation to provide remedial services for the students who reside in Rockingham County and also have identified academic needs. I wanted to bring to your attention that we don't have all of our science data yet, because students just recently took SOL, so that's still coming in. But once that's in, I would like to add a science objective to our grant application and some data to go along with that. If we want to use any funds towards science, and some of our schools like to have parent and family engagement nights that center around science, then we have to have that built into the grant application. With Title II, Title II is used to support programs that increase federal achievement. We're using Title II funds to provide evidence-based professional development and coaching activities that improve the knowledge of teachers, principals, and paraprofessionals. The 2025-26 Title II Part A application is based on funding of approximately $343,000. The funds will be used for salaries and benefits of four literacy coaches. And again, we'll provide equitable services. Redeemer Classical School and Blue Ridge Christian School have elected to participate in Title II for the 2025-26 school year, and they'll use the funds for staff professional development. The purpose of Title III Part A is to provide support for the education of English learners who have limited English proficiency. This application is based on approximately $145,000. To date, approximately 1,700 K-12 students qualify for EL services. This is 14.8% of our division's enrollment, and 383 EL students continue to be monitored. We're using these funds for five full-time EL instructional assistants who provide support above and beyond the core instruction provided by EL teachers. Like science, we don't have all of our WIDA data in. It's trickling in now, so we do need to build a little of that information into our Title III app before we send it off to the DOE, so that will be something else I'll take care of. Title IV Part A, grant programs are designed to support the comprehensive needs of students. This application is written based on funding of approximately $156,900. We transfer Title IV funds into Title I, as we're permitted to do, and we use those funds to cover the cost of full-time elementary behavior specialists. A small percentage of the Title IV funds will be used for the same Eastern Mennonite Elementary School and Redeemer Classical private school students who are eligible for Title I. In addition to what I just mentioned, there's an action item for your approval. It's the Title I Part C Education of Migratory Children Certification. The purpose of the migrant ed program is to design and support high-quality and comprehensive educational programs that provide migrant children with the same opportunity to meet the challenging state academic content and student achievement standards expected of all children. The migrant ed program works to ensure that all migrant students graduate with a high school diploma or a GED, which will prepare them for responsible citizenship, further learning, and productive employment. JMU serves as the lead division agent and administrator of the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program, which is funded by the Virginia Department of Education, and they write the grant application, which includes eight participating divisions, including Rockingham. They're working on their 2025-26 application, which is due to the Department of Ed on July 1, so I did provide the letter to Dr. Shiflett and the MOU that he typically signs, just so you have a little bit of information about that. And finally, I would like to thank the numerous central office leaders and literacy coaches who provided information and data pertaining to the programs they oversee. Their help in creating objectives and responding to program-specific questions is very appreciated. In addition, school administrators and staff participated in needs assessment meetings and stakeholder engagement surveys. Parents and community members also participated in the stakeholder engagement survey. In fact, 70% of the survey respondents were parents and community members, so I really appreciate that, because we spend a lot of time talking with staff, so to get that much participation from parents was really helpful. So, I appreciate everybody who participated in this process, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Judd. That was a lot of information and a lot of work.
Yes, it is.
Board members, do you have any questions for her?
Could you help just explain to me the, so when the private schools, we said Blue Ridge, Redeemer Classical, and I thought I saw another one there, maybe the only two. But are we, so are they receiving the funds that we're receiving, or are they receiving the teachers that we're paying for to go help them?
So, that's a great question. So, a private school can never actually directly receive federal funds. They all have to go through us, the school division, but we provide, think about it, that we're providing the services to the children. So, those children that reside in Rockingham County still get to benefit from those funds. So, for example, with Title I, Rockingham County Schools hired a tutor who's providing the services to the children at those private schools, but the funding for that is coming through this grant, not through local funds. But you may recall seeing that on a personnel sheet. So, we, and I work with that tutor. You know, I get information and follow up on student assessment results and check in with them to make sure they're meeting the Title I requirements that the private schools have to meet.
So, how would a private school apply for that?
That's a great question, too. So, we are required to send out information to them about a meeting that we hold every year, and we do that in March. So, I'll send a letter to the private schools that are in Rockingham County and also in neighboring areas, too, because with Title I is about where the child lives, not necessarily where the private school is located. The other federal programs are about where the private school is located. But I'll send out a letter, and it will invite them to an informational meeting. We call it meaningful consultation, and in that meeting, we talk about all the different federal programs. We have to tell them that they're eligible for those funds, and then give them an opportunity to let us know whether they want to participate or not.
That's great.
Yes, so that's how that works.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
I didn't know that.
Do you send that out to all private schools?
We typically send them to, like, Rockingham-Harrisonburg area.
Do you know how many you send out? I'm sorry.
Um, I'm gonna guess.
I mean, you don't have to, like, is it three or is it 17?
Yeah, I think it's about 12 or 13.
And only two respond? Was it EMU and Redeemer? Is that what you said?
So, we have three that have participated with us. So, Eastern Mennonite has for a number of years, then Redeemer came on. Blue Ridge Christian School is a newer one. They participated last year and are this year. We have another program that's not actually under me, but Mr. Bryant works with Cornerstone Christian to provide services to special education students, so he also joins in on that meeting.
That's great.
And so, that's another school that takes advantage of this and comes to the meaningful consultation meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry. And this was the Title IV? Is that what you were, is that what we're talking about here?
This is for all of the, the meeting is for all of the federal programs?
For all of them.
It is, yes. We talk about each one in the meeting.
That's neat. I'm glad that the children of Rockham County can benefit from these federal funds that are coming in, no matter if they're public or private, so maybe next year, I can do a better job in making sure that they know about it and they can apply for it, so. Great. I had one more question. Did you have another one? Go ahead, go ahead. I'll ask after you.
It's truly speculation on your part, so feel free to just say, "I don't know." I just have to wonder why only two or three respond out of 12. Do you think it's that they don't have the need in those schools, or they don't understand?
We do have a number of schools, I think, in our attendance area that may not just want to participate in something with federal funds. We have some Mennonite schools within our attendance area, so it is just speculation. They receive the letter, and sometimes they'll call me and just say, "No, we're not interested in attending." Other times, they'll return the form. Sometimes, we don't hear back from them.
Yeah, that's all for me. Thank you.
And maybe some of our EL guests can maybe explain this more when they come up tonight, but I would just like to know a little bit more about the Maggard Education Program. Maybe y'all could talk about it when you come up.
I do know that Dr. Correll Clark works very closely with the migrant ed program, much more closely than I do. They kind of, they reach out to me periodically for information related to our students, and then they work with those students to provide some supports that we talked about here, but she may be able to add a little bit more.
I'll ask her when she comes up.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judd. Next up on our list, Dr. Correll Clark is coming with a team, I think, maybe, to give a presentation on our EL initiatives for this past school year and give us an update on a lot of things that have been going on.
Yes, we are. Good evening, Dr. Shiflett, Chair Horst, members of the school board. On behalf of the English-language learner team, I want to extend our sincere thanks to you for your continued support of our EL students and families. Specifically, we are deeply grateful for your approval of two new initiatives this school year: the implementation of the newcomer program and the addition of three full-time EL liaisons. These efforts have already made a meaningful impact in supporting our most vulnerable students and in strengthening communication and engagement with RCPS families. Your leadership has made that possible. Tonight, I am honored to introduce the individuals who are making these initiatives come to life every day. First, I'd like to introduce to you our three liaisons. We have Becca Vazquez, okay, Emma Stradman, and Sylvia Sanchez. They will briefly share the work they've done this year to build connections with families, assist in registration process, and support schools. Following them, you'll hear from the newcomer teachers, Richard Brigman and Ellie Morales. Rick is from Covron, and Ellie is from Mountain View. They will give you a brief look into the day-to-day experience of our newcomer students and the powerful growth we've seen thanks to your investment. Thank you again for your vision and commitment to equity in education. I now welcome Becca, Sylvia, and Emma to begin.
Good evening, members of the board, and good evening to Dr. Shiflett. What do liaisons do? In an introduction of what the liaisons do, we are vital to school communities. We connect English learners and families and school staff to ensure academic and social success. What we mean by that is achieving meaningful participation progress and belonging both in the classroom and in the broader school community. And I have the testimony of a parent that indicated how grateful she was for the help and guidance that the new liaisons provide to the students and parents that have language barriers. My name is Lucia Salina Sosa, and I needed lots of help with the school registration for my son. This help is something we didn't have before, but we do now. I have really enjoyed getting to meet Sylvia, the liaison here, because she's very friendly. She helped me clarify all my doubts and questions. I always had a difficult time dealing with the school matters ever since my first son came to Covron about 10 years ago, and there was no help like we have now. I am very grateful for this help, and I appreciate it. Thanks. Besides the parent testimony, I also have Ms. Stephanie Morris. She's the registrar here at Broadway High School.
Hi. Before I had Emma here, I was lost. I don't know Spanish. Wish I did. Our registration process was very timely. Propio is great for attendance, discipline, short things, but going back and forth between me, person on the phone, the family, I didn't get a lot of answers. It was next to impossible to understand some of their transcripts or some of the classes they took. So, Emma's just swooped right in and helped me tremendously. She helps our counselors. She helps our families with our kind closet here and our food market that we have. She shows them what we offer. She helps do home visits. Our counselors love you. I love her, and I thank you so much for Emma and all the liaisons. I'm sure we all feel the same way. She's made the students with her, she tests the duh, sorry. She does WIDA testing, and before, our EL teachers would have to take the time to test our kids. Sometimes, it would be a week or two until they could start school. Now, they can start in days instead of weeks, so it's just great having her.
So, during registration, does Emma come up and sit in the office with you guys that week, or I guess it's all year long, but I mean, especially when the kids come back? So, will you be in the office with them doing that?
Yes, we have a room here for her. Yes, we have a room here for her. And so she'll just take the whole family, because sometimes they'll say they have one to enroll in, then they bring several more, even though they're not from our school. But she registers, registers them all at the same time, and it's just so helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. What we do with the EL teachers, we, as liaisons, we attend EL events during and after school. And that is to build the trust and relationships. What Ms. Morris was saying about the WIDA screening, when we have newcomers, we need to find out the level of English proficiency that they can demonstrate during the test to help the EL teachers with placement. And that way, we can deliver a more effective instruction to these children. And that it goes, that goes from K through twelve. The same thing goes, the different levels that a teacher needs to find out. And the sooner they do, the sooner this student comes on board. We also deal with the EL teachers, explaining cultural norms, values, and practices of EL families. So teachers can better interpret that student behavior, communication styles, and family expectations, which helps a lot with trust and relationships between families and the EL students and the teachers. What we do with the schools and what we know as central office, we do report low engagement trends across multiple school sites. We also try to meet the requirements for home language surveys and preferred language communications. We also collaborate with the EL department to provide, to provide cultural training and awareness, interpretation ethics, and family engagement best practices. That's how we like to support the schools, with discipline, attendance, outreach, and cultural sensitivity. We work with Ms. Dinnell in admins, in home business, and follow-ups, and resource officers. Besides, we do the newcomers program, explaining families, how the program works, and notify the student is accepted. And we help the families and the administrators get that process through and get the child in the newcomer program, either with Cub Run or Mountain View. We also have registration of returning EL students in all attendance areas. Recently, we had the announcement for these people that have a language barrier family that needs help with returning registrations. Some of the data I have here for returning students for the 25, 25th school year. Ms. Becca had approximately between eighty and ninety requests. Sylvia had between ninety and one hundred. I had between seventy and eighty. And we needed the support of Dr. Alicia Corral Clark, which exceeded the number between one sixty and one seventy students' requests. And that happened in the last ten days. We are the ears on the ground, basically, for our schools, our teachers and our administrators. We bring real-time family concerns on school-level challenges back to inform about it. What we do with the EL students, we welcome our new students. We explain rules, schedules, check-ins, mentoring. We connect the students to clubs and activities. We like to offer the sports options to see their interests, what they like. We also do communication for better attendance and meetings. The liaisons work directly with the EL students by checking in regularly, addressing social-emotional needs, and helping with classroom transitions or behavior expectations. We also help the EL families clarify school policies, curriculum, grading systems. We help families access healthcare, food, housing, and adult education. We also host family workshops and events. We foster the trust and open communication by helping families feel welcome to this new country for them. Some of the resources guides that we offer the parents, I have a copy here. We set it up for them in their cell phones when they are low-income families and new. We encourage EL families to attend school events, parent nights, and IP meetings by explaining the importance of their participation and such. We also expanded our communication venues with other liaisons. For example, Harrisonburg City Public Schools, Augusta County Public Schools, Shenandoah County, Page County. We collaborate with bilingual liaisons, social workers, counselors, and community coordinators. We share strategies, resources, information about family needs. And we build a united front to outreach and engagement across departments. We coordinate efforts to support newcomers or students in crisis. And we also offer cross-training and peer support to strengthen the team impact. We are in constant communication with liaisons. Ninety percent of the time is Harrisonburg City Schools. By doing so, we accelerate the process of bringing a student into the classroom. There's no language barriers from the time they leave their old school to the time they come to the new school. It's a faster process. As far as registration for this current year, on my end, I have a hundred and seventy-five responses through Google Forms to welcome new students to Rockingham County Public Schools. Ms. Vasquez here has had a hundred and fifty requests for such new registrations. And Ms. Sylvia, because she came on board in February, mid-February, if I believe, she had had seventy responses. These are for new registrations only. We have had to have the support of Dr. Corral Clark as well. It's a little overwhelming, but the program works. It is wonderful. We do feel that we are helping in a very positive way newcomers to join the classroom, for families to feel there's a connection, that they can trust the school system with their children, that we're gonna offer excellent instruction, and that all of them are welcome. We are connectors, we're advocates. We interpret the culture, needs, and policies, not just language. We make sure schools and districts fulfill their commitment to equitable education. We are here to collaborate across roles to build a stronger school system for all. I appreciate your time. I am very grateful for the opportunity that the Rockingham County Public Schools count so far with three excellent liaisons, two wonderful newcomer programs, a Cub Run, a Mountain View. And we would like to help many more. Thank you. Any questions?
You said, did you say that you guys have registered a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy in the last ten days?
These are returning students. We have had the request of people that need assistance with the returning registrations. Ms. Sylvia here has the biggest number, well, Dr. Corral Clark does, as a support for all of us, because it's overwhelming, because Ms. Sylvia has ten schools. She has the East Rock and the Spotswood.
Right.
I am blessed with the Broadway area. And TA is for Ms. Vasquez here. So besides the, all the new people registering for the school year, we have the returning students as well.
Awesome. We're, I'm grateful. I can't speak for the whole board. I know they are as well, more likely. But I'm grateful to have you guys as a liaison at the schools. It's something that we had talked about over the last couple of years. And to be able to have you guys over this past year and see the work that you're doing and hear the help that you are to the schools is much appreciated. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you do.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had to step out for just a second. So maybe you covered this. But you said that thirty, like thirty percent of the people that call and need help are English-speaking only, just from your end. What, what are the hurdles that they're having trouble with? And are they, are there things that we need to do on our end? Thank you. And thank you for helping everybody. I really do appreciate all the work you do. I was just gonna say, I think there's a part two.
Well, good evening, Dr. Shiflett and school board members. We are the current teachers of the elementary newcomer programs, our first year, and we're just here to share with you some of our successes. I'm sorry, I'm Rick Brigman. I am the Cub Run Elementary Newcomer Teacher.
Hello, I'm Doreli Morales, the newcomer teacher at Mountain View Elementary. We're excited to share with you all about Rockingham County's first newcomer, newcomer program, specifically designed to support students in grades three through five. This program is tailored to meet the need of newcomer students, which we define as those who have been in the United States for less than twelve months of active enrollment in US schools. To be eligible for this program, students must also score within the 1.0 to 1.9 range on the WIDA screener, indicating that they are at the very beginning states of English language development. We understand that every student's journey is unique. So while the WIDA score and time in the country benchmarks guide our placement, we also consider individual circumstances to ensure that we're doing what's best for each child.
So between Cub Run and Mountain View, we served thirty-seven, third, fourth, and fifth grade newcomer English learners from thirteen countries, speaking eight languages. Of those thirty-seven newcomer students in our programs this year, twenty-three exited, and several who were late arrivals this spring will return to newcomer support, either in the elementary school or at the middle school. The goal of our newcomer program is to empower newcomer elementary English learners to become proficient communicators in English, laying a strong foundation for their academic and social successes in their new language environment. With that said, I want to clarify that our focus is English language development. While we do teach content area vocabulary, knowledge, and skills in our program, that's not our primary focus. Our main focus is English language development, teaching essential English vocabulary and phrases to help them be successful in both their school and communities.
Within the first week of a student joining the program, we administer the IPTI Oral English Assessment to establish a baseline for their English proficiency. This same assessment is then administered mid-year and again at the end of the year to track progress over time. When a student improves by two levels and the newcomer teacher determines that the student is ready to return to the general education classroom full-time, the exit process is flexible. And if a student is showing rapid progress in acquiring English, we may reassess them earlier than the scheduled benchmarks to ensure they can move forward without unnecessary delay. Our goal is to build a strong foundation in English so they can continue growing academically and socially once they return to the classroom.
I'm gonna go into a little bit of information about our testing at Cub Run over the course of the year. But before I do, just so that you have a sense of the assessments we're using and what this, this data means, I want to explain the two primary assessments we use. One that we use is a Ballard and Tye IPT1, which is an oral English proficiency test for elementary English learners. This primarily, well, this is an excellent tool for assessing vocabulary and grammar development. We also use the WIDA screener and ACCESS. This is, of course, the Virginia State English Proficiency Assessment. And there are four parts, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. And this is in a content area context. The scoring levels for the IPT1 is Level A to Level F. A being, of course, the non-English speaker, and F being nearly affluent or having fluent-like quality in their speech. And for the WIDA scores, in Virginia, 1.0 is a non-English speaker and 4.4 is the score designating a student moving from served status to monitored status. At Cub Run, the, on the IPT1 test, which we give three times in the year, at the beginning of the year, December, January, and then again in May, all students scored at Level A at the start of the year, as would be expected, with one scoring at Level B. At the mid-year or at the end-of-year administrations, all advanced two to three levels, with the exception of the student who scored high on the initial testing. But he did score very well on his science SOL test, so he's doing okay. With our WIDA screener and ACCESS scores, all students entered between Level 1.0 and 1.5. The ACCESS test is administered in February each year. Fourteen out of fifteen showed growth. One scored the same. Four students scored in the Level 2 range, and one scored in the Level 3 range, which is pretty impressive for a newcomer.
At Mountain View, we had the privilege of serving twenty-one newcomer students this year, and we're proud to share that twelve of those students successfully exited the program after showing strong progress in both language and readiness. Our classroom was incredibly diverse, representing a rich blend of languages, including Spanish, Ukrainian, Kurdish, Dari, Russian, Arabic, and Hindi. The countries these students come from are displayed on the slide, and they reflect the global backgrounds that makes our community so unique. The diversity brings both challenges and deep rewards, and it reinforces just how essential it is to have a program tailored to support students at the very beginning of their English language journey. To give you a glimpse of our school year, I've included a few photos from throughout the school year. These moments capture our students' learning, growing, and connecting, not, but with each other and their new school community. When our students entered the program, every one of them tested at Level A on the IPTI Oral English Assessment, truly beginning English learners. By the end of the year, the growth was incredible. Fifty-eight percent of students improved by three levels. Twenty-nine percent improved by two levels. These gains not only reflect their hard work, but the focused, individualized support they received in the newcomer program. We also tracked their WIDA access scores. Students took the test in February, and we received the results mid-May. At the start of the year, all students were in the 1.0 to 1.9 range. Seventy-six percent of students improved by at least point five. Three students are Three students are in the 2.3 to 2.7 range. Two students have reached the 3.5 to 3.6 range. Altogether, 95% have made progress. The graph on the slide compares their starting scores to where they are now, visually showing this improvement progress. While they not, may not be on grade level yet, they've got a powerful start, targeted support. These students are going, are gaining confidence, building language, and moving forward. Now I'd like to share a few short videos from students who have exited the newcomer program. These clips give you a chance to hear directly from them in their own words about their experiences, their growth, and how far they've come. Their voices are a powerful reminder of why this program matters. Please play the video.
Hello, my name is Alexa. Hello, my name is Alexa, and I'm from Honduras. And my, and my favorite, favorite newcomer class was playing bingo and flashcards.
Hi, I'm Adrian, I'm from Honduras. I like to learn words, play bingo.
Hi, I'm Slada, I'm from Ukraine, and my favorite part at newcomer class is learning English.
Hi, my name is Lufa, Lufa, I'm from Guatemala, and the newcomer class helped me learn my English.
My name is Irina, I enjoyed it because it was fun. We played bingo and had small groups. I learned English, math, and reading. The newcomer program helped me write English and give confidence.
Hello, my name is Anna, and what I learned in Mountain View was to, how to speak English and how to be kind with others.
My name is Irina, I enjoyed it because we played bingo and made new friends. I learned math, English, reading. The newcomer program helped me speak English and give me confidence.
My name is Carter, my favorite activity in the role is classroom is the safari park because if some animals...
There's so many things I want to say about those kids, but I, I know our time is tight, so I'm gonna skip it. We do have some teacher videos as well, EL teachers at both Cub Run and Mountain View. We're gracious enough to record their thoughts. And from Cub Run, we're gonna be hearing from EL teachers Pam Groff, Tui Benito, uh, Benuto, Tamsin Benner, and Amy Williams.
Hi, my name is Christina LaPatt, I am the EL teacher at Mountain View Elementary School. As a teacher, specifically a classroom teacher, it can feel overwhelming to meet the unique needs of a newcomer. While these students are totally capable, bright, and adaptable, they require a lot of one-on-one support. Some students arrive with little to no academic background at all. For an upper-grade classroom teacher, for example, trying to teach something like the ocean floor to a class of already diverse-level group of students, it can add a great deal of trepidation to simultaneously teach letter sounds and phonics. Forget about words like continental drift, they haven't even yet learned to ask, where's the bathroom? With that, and as a newcomer student, to be placed in the same environment where you hear long strings of incomprehensible speech clinging to one or two random words here and there that you overheard last night at McDonald's, like the word order, but wait, your teacher's talking about sequence, and you have no idea, and you just look around to see what everyone else is doing. You probably spend your day trying to save face and copy what others are saying. Meanwhile, your teachers don't realize that you don't actually know what you're saying, you're just mimicking as a coping strategy. You go home exhausted because you spent your entire day trying to make sense of many hours' worth of input, piecing together a few words here and there, but mostly socially related. Those academic pieces probably didn't stick, and tomorrow you'll do it all over again. It can feel really defeating. Then comes the newcomer program, which is a win for both teachers and students. It's not perfect, because nothing in education is, there's still often too many students, too few resources, and an endless variety of challenges and needs, but it's a starting place. It's a place where students can come and focus on language without the added burden of heavy academic vocabulary. They'll learn useful language for both their social and academic worlds, and the teacher will not only recognize and acknowledge these challenges, but he or she will apply strategies geared specifically to a newcomer's needs. They'll repeat information in spiral as often as necessary, they'll slow their speech, they'll enunciate, they'll break things down, break down spelling, bring attention to cognates and first language connections, they'll translate deeper concepts if in a way necessary, the students won't rely on them, they'll feel open to taking risks because everyone around them is in similar shoes. It's also a small classroom environment where students can thrive and build a community and confidence to go back to their classrooms when they're ready. When they do go back, they will still have a long road ahead. They won't magically exit the language program or be ready to take their SATs, but they will be able to access material at a foundational level, confidently communicate their basic needs, and most importantly, they'll feel a real part of their classroom.
Hi, my name is Courtney French, and I am an EL teacher at Mountain View Elementary School, and I want to talk to you about the newcomer program, which is one of the most vibrant and inspiring programs that we have here at Mountain View. This program is designed for students who are both new to English as well as new to the school system in the U.S. So from day one, it becomes a place where they are not just learning English, but growing confidence, building community, and beginning to shine in their own unique and special ways. One of the first things we notice is how quickly students begin developing their listening and their speaking skills. What starts with quiet observation soon becomes brave attempts at conversation, and before long, they're eagerly sharing ideas, asking questions, participating in class. The growth that they have in speaking and listening is truly remarkable. The newcomer program is also a space that feels safe and welcoming. Alongside learning English, students are introduced to how school works here in the U.S. Everything from how to navigate a lunchroom, how to raise a hand, how we work together as teams, this blend of academic and survival English helps prepare them for both classroom success and everyday confidence. But one of the most beautiful parts of the program is the special friendships that form. Students come from many different countries and cultures, yet they quickly bond through their shared experiences, their laughter, the mutual support. You can see their joy every single day, whether they're proudly reading a new sentence or helping a classmate with a new word or encouraging a brand-new newcomer student to their program, they're celebrating their progress with smiles. At Mountain View, we believe that every student has a voice, and the newcomer program helps them to find that. The students are not only learning a new language, but they're discovering their potential, and I have been so honored to be a part of that phenomenal journey.
As an elementary EL teacher, it's been very rewarding watching the hard work of our newcomer students. Graduates of that program are confident English speakers, and they're excelling in content areas like math, science, and reading. Their success is testament to the power of a well-designed supportive program.
I am really excited about having the newcomer program here. One of the things that in the past would often happen as we had newcomers, they would come, they would go in their class, I'd often see them kind of hiding, and, because it's a new experience, and they're really overwhelmed, overstimulated, and often scared. But when I see Mr. Brigman's class together, they're laughing, they look happy, and they're learning the English that they need to communicate with each other, because they're not all from the same country, but they're learning the skills to learn what school is here in the United States, to communicate with each other, and to prepare themselves for going back into the bigger classroom.
When newcomer students first came to the U.S., they usually feel anxious because of the language barrier and the culture barrier, and very different school expectations. The newcomer program, where the teachers working with a small group of students, helped build a strong sense of community among the learners, and, and because of that, they have more confidence when they come out into regular classrooms, they are more likely to, willing to participate in class discussions and tend to do much better academically.
Newcomer students who arrive here in Rockingham County are coming from diverse backgrounds. Some of them have a strong academic background after attending school in their home country, and others are attending school for the very first time when they arrive here in Rockingham County. Our newcomer program is well-equipped to meet the needs of the diverse learners in a smaller classroom setting.
All right, so I know that a lot of our presentation focused on testing data.
Hello, my...
Hi, hello. Sorry. Testing data, but I hope, seeing the photos of the kids at school and hearing the short videos from the students, and then hearing the teachers' comments gives you what I feel is more important than the test data, and that's what's actually happening with these kids coming into a school with a new language, new culture, and then seeing them become successful in, of, in my experience, a very short amount of time as opposed to a student being placed in a grade-level classroom. So thank you to Dr. Shiflett and the executive team at the central office for their support, the school board members for their support, and our school administrator teams led by Drew Miller and Sharon March for their support and for helping these kids become successful.
Thank you, guys, for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention and for sharing the successes of this very important program. Board members, are there any further questions or comments for the team?
Ms. Clark, are you gonna?
Pardon me?
Are you gonna talk?
I wasn't planning on it, but I would definitely be happy to.
Well, I have, I do have a question. I'm, are, are, is our EL program going to a new curriculum this coming year? Are we stepping away from what we've been doing and going to a new curriculum?
I think that might be a question better answered by Dr. Shiflett. I mean, we've discussed what is the best for the students so far, and I think we're going to continue to discuss that into the summer.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess the reason why I ask that, because as I visit classrooms, I have talked with a few of the teachers, and their biggest concern is that, um, that the kids are able to learn how to speak English, you know, that the basics of learning English as they go forward, and they, the ones that I've spoken to, I really like the old one instead of the new curriculum that is, so I just wanted to ask, because I didn't know if that was something that you guys, when, I'll talk to Dr. Shiflett about it then, yeah.
Yeah, so one of my comments to our instructional staff at our last meeting was alignment's important to me. So if I'm in a third-grade classroom and I'm learning about, you know, the biomes, when students are getting services for special education or EL services, there should be support for that curriculum that they're gonna be tested on, right? Because we understand that we don't want to put all of our emphasis on standard of learning assessments, but we are critiqued by how well we do on our standards of learning assessment, so alignment's really, really critical. So I think the conversation has been, you know, when do we use the Connect curriculum and when are we supporting our standards of learning Virginia curriculum that's gonna be tested in our classrooms? And I think another part that we have to discuss is, reading is a part of that EL process, and so when are kids getting the decoding skills that they need, which is an important part of reading? So we gotta make sure, and it's a lot of moving parts, right? It's, and I think it's gonna take a little bit of every tool in the toolbox to get our kids sufficient in, in speaking, listening, reading, English. And so, and I think that's been some of the conversations that some of the folks have been having is, when is Connect the best curriculum? When is Learning Studio the best, you know, curriculum? When is, when is, when is an appropriate time to do some support for basic phonics skills with our students who, who need to learn those as well? So it's an ongoing conversation about how we move forward.
Is this gonna be something that's gonna be decided this summer, and they're gonna come back next year, and we're gonna be like all-in on Connects? Or is you thinking that you're gonna have conversations with the EL department and teachers and find the best way going forward? I mean...
Yeah, that's been part of the conversations. I think maybe earlier this week, there was conversations already talking about it last week, about how does this, how do these things align, and when, when do we use what when? Again, sort of use that toolbox analogy, when is this the best tool for the job, right?
Can I just provide some feedback?
Yeah.
From the perspective of the newcomer elementary teachers? We are using the Vista Higher Learning Get Ready Sore books, and in there you have, you have phonics, you have literacy, you have math, you have social studies, you have science, all that's presented in each unit. And so for us, at this point, it's working pretty well. We're happy with that. Just some feedback from us.
Thank you.
What is the estimated amount of time that you anticipate kids, they join the newcomer program? Do we have an average? We expect them to be where they need to be, within three months, six months, a full year? What are you finding to be...
We're finding that each kid, it'd be, each child is different from the other. But, so it all depends on that, but you guys are seeing an tremendous growth, starting within three months of when they get there. And a lot of the majority of them exited the program or were ready to exit the program by December, January, we were already starting to, to look into, giving them the test to exit them out. So it's very rare, or at least so far, we have not had anybody that has been there the entire year that I can think of.
And that's how it's designed to be? Like fluid?
Correct.
Come in, learn, learn the skills that you need to have to be successful, and then...
Right. We, the last thing we want to do is to hold them back. So if they're ready to leave our program, we want them to go back and be with their peers in their own school. That's the gold.
Do you have a waitlist yet?
We always have a waitlist. We need more, we always have a waitlist. And we're lucky enough that next year, we will have a newcomer program at John C. Myers also, so that will really be very helpful.
Very good. Board members, any more questions? So I'm hearing that it's kind of a, they come in, they learn English, they leave.
It's an open-door policy.
And it's an open door.
Yeah.
And they could come in at any time.
Correct.
What happens next week? Do they just go home for the summer and then see you next fall, or...
Unfortunately, yes.
And then do, do you see a lot of backslide for the summer, or what happens to these...
We don't know yet, because this is the first year. So we'll be able to see that next year.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you. Yeah. Board members, we have two more information items. One is the financial review for April of 2025, and the Finance Department Staff Report dated for today, May 29th. Those are in your folders for your review, which brings us to item number seven, committee reports, and I'll just look over here and see if there's anything new to report from our committees. Okay, Ms. Laura?
I'm gonna try reading this from my phone. The Shindo Valley Regional Program approved the, approved RCPS for a fifth behavior analyst of BCBA to support behavior intervention needs. Our division is committed to having the most BCBAs to support schools, and interviews have already begun. The SVRP funding is, is funding training for three new RCPS employees to become MANT trainers on June 24th through June 26th. This will allow us to train more staff in de-acceleration techniques, which went addressing behavior and issues in schools, so that's really exciting. VSRP is in the early stages of exploring hiring related service providers such as vision, hearing, and adapted physical education. So these are PE teachers that are vision, hearing, and adapted teachers. These professionals are hard for the school divisions to fire, to find and hire, so we're fortunate to have VSRP helping us with that. VSRP continues to partner with Sands Anderson Law Group in specializing in special ed law. They provide monthly webinars for sped, special education guidance and consultation when needed. And our VSRP set the meeting date for the 2025-26 school year, so that we did all of that in our meeting a couple weeks ago.
Fantastic. Board members, any questions for Ms. Laura?
No, and just to be clear to the public, we don't have, and all the school board members, again, aren't assigned to a committee this year, there's only two that is assigned to the committee, and that's Ms. Laura to special needs, and Ms. Cave is at the Governor's School, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Moving right along to school board, or no, superintendent comments.
Thank you, Chair Hurst. Three comments I'd like to address. First, I want to talk about some budget items. Beginning in early April, Justin and I began having two-by-two meetings with our school board members to discuss the bonus and some additional state revenue. We were getting some additional state revenue because our ADM, our average daily membership, had increased. And at the May 7th special session, we discussed these topics with, you know, among the entire school board, and the school board decided that they wanted to earmark some of the additional state revenue that we received for our increased ADM towards new security cameras. We also discussed how to pay the state bonus. We receive funding from the state for SOQ instructional and support positions only. The total amount received was a little over $1.2 million. The state recognizes approximately a... The state recognizes approximately 11, 1100 positions as meeting that classification, but we have around 2,200 contracted employees. If we paid the $1,000, what you, what you kind of hear advertised for all full-time employees and 500 for part-time, we would need about an additional $1.2 million of local money. And after some discussions, the school board decided we would take the money that we were allocated from the state and divide it among all employees. So for contracted employees, they will receive $525 and part-time contracted employees will receive $250. The bonus will be paid on August 20th to all current 12 and 11-month staff and to returning 10-month staff. Since we are not able to allocate additional local resources, this allows us to recognize all employees to the greatest extent of possible utilizing the state money available. So I just wanted to highlight the conversations and then later in June, Justin will be bringing forth some budget amendments to move some money forward. I also would like to highlight that we're kind of finished, finished with our standards of learning assessments for the year, maybe doing some makeups and expedited retakes or what have you. And I had challenged students at the beginning of the testing window to do their very best, take their time, and strive for perfection. And we celebrated yesterday at the Wood Grill, the students who earned a perfect score. And we had 71 students who were part of the 600 Club Celebration and had a good time enjoying lunch with them. And I want to give a shout out to Lillian Stonback, a fourth grader at Lacy Spring Elementary School. She earned a perfect score on all three of her SOL assessments, which is quite an accomplishment. And finally, I want to sort of say a thank you to the board and our board of supervisors for supporting a reading cohort program through the University of Virginia. And on May 17th, we had 16 teachers and one principal graduate with their masters in reading from the University of Virginia. So I'm thankful that those folks were able to complete the program and I appreciate the financial support from the school board and the board of supervisors. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. In other business tonight, we will go on to school board highlights, questions, and comments. Ms. Cave, you want to start us off tonight? Did I start you? I don't, I don't remember. Mr. Cross, you want to start us off tonight? I can only go from left to right. Mr. Cross?
That's me. I'm, there's a mouse over here, so if you see me get up and run, I'm gonna run. So it may, it may end the meeting a lot sooner. I was getting ready to go to the bathroom and I saw it and I walked away, so let me just know. I will run if I see a mouse. I'm, you will too? Whoop, I will run and scream like a girl. I'm, I have, yeah, I do have two things. Number one, Dr. Shiflett, if you will, Governor Yonkin came out with an executive order, executive order 48, I think it was, is, it was addressing anti-Semitic rhetoric that's going on within the state and public education. And I'd like to know exactly in that order what, what we're going to do as a division, how that's going to be rolled out for our children and with our students and just to know kind of what that looks like on a local level. So if you could, at the next school board meeting, get that together and talk with us about that.
Yes, if I may, a part of that executive order was a directive to the Virginia Department of Education to create and publish resources for school divisions. So I haven't seen those resources yet, but if I have those made available to me, I'll share those at the next meeting or when I, when I get them and then we can discuss how we implement them at the local level. So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm, the second thing I had tonight was to talk with the board. The school board had talked about, about a year, a little over a year ago, that we were looking into making sure that our kids were going on certain historical field trips that we were gonna, there it was? Did you say it?
It's over there on the wall.
Mouse?
No, no, not on the wall, along the wall.
This meeting is adjourned.
Is there a reason our safety guy's on the other side of the other floor yet?
Oh my gosh. I don't know if I can, if I could have been continued. I'm such a baby, I'm sorry when it comes to mice. No, it's all right. Oh gosh. It's all right, no, I'm a baby when it comes to these things, so I'm, I have some trauma dating back to my, my younger years with mice. So we had talked about, the board had talked about going on certain field trips. Now, don't be making any noises because you're gonna mess me up. But we had talked about going on certain field trips. One of the field trips that I would really like to make mandatory for our kids in Rockingham County go to would be the Holocaust Museum, whether that be by the 11th grade, 10th or 11th grade, but I would like to make it mandatory that they go there. And I, I really don't like just the idea of the autonomy of a teacher, whether they can go or not go. I'd like for the board to set a standard saying that this is going to be something that we take serious and we want our children to go to that because there is a lot of anti-Semitic rhetoric that's out there that's even saying, I mean, that the Holocaust didn't even happen. And so the further we go on through history, the more of these delusions we're going to face against the Jewish people. And I want our kids to know the truth and be able to visit the Holocaust Museum. So I'm, I'd like to have talks and discussions amongst the board of setting some mandatory field trips that we would go on and even starting next year. So I'm, school board, I'd like to have further conversations with you guys on that. And I would just like to say thank you again to the, all the EL teachers that came out, our liaison group, I'm looking through the podium, but thank you guys for all that you do. Our EL program is very close to my heart and I really thank you guys for what you do. I haven't liked the rhetoric when it comes to Matt Cross and some of the things I've had to face over the last five years. If you think I'm a racist, then spend a day with me. I'd love to take you places I go and places I visit and the things I do from my heart. So thank you, Dr. Carol Clark, for all that you do. The relationship, I've been able to know you for several years. You have a passion in doing this work and it shows in the work that you're doing. So thank you so much and thank you for being there for our kids.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I just, I have a question just along those lines. I mean, this is school board questions. So Dr. Shiflett, just offhand, if we were to, if we wanted those field trips to the Holocaust, I mean, when would be the appropriate time in high school? I feel like as a senior, it's too much busyness, too much going on. Like where would it align with the curriculum best? Eighth, ninth, 10th? Is 11th too late? Do they get too busy with MTC? Do, I mean, what's your opinion on that before we move on?
11th is when we teach US history. So as far as aligning with the curriculum, that may be the most opportune time.
That would be a great.
Because they would study that in the second semester of the school, right, of their school year and they start talking about World War II, the Holocaust and those things.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna chime in on that note that if we go that route as a board, there is a cost consideration when we start directing and, and I really, I think you all are already aware of that, but I just want to point that out.
I would definitely go before the board supervisors and advocate for this allotment of money to be able to, and I think they would, they would agree as well that they would want our students in Rockingham County to know this history as well. So I would be willing to at least entertain those thoughts and go to the board supervisors and tell them that, yeah, it's going to be an extra expense, but we think it's something that's very important for the children in RCPs. I have considered the cost.
Ms. Lord, do you have any questions or comments, highlights?
Your, your comments tonight are very timely, Mr. Cross, because today I actually drove a school bus into downtown DC. And it was, it was an adventure. And honestly, I wanted to come tonight and say, everybody should learn how to drive a school bus because it was an adventure and we did just fine. And it was, it was a lot of fun, but we do, I know that a lot of our high schools do have a hard time finding somebody willing to drive into DC and our route drivers have a hard time doing it because we, we did overlap with the routes going home. So I would, I think we need to push and get more bus drivers too. That would help us attain that goal.
Now, they do have a trucker GPS. Do you know about that? Costs a little bit of extra money, but you could.
I, I use Thomas GPS. I took my youngest child with me and said, you're gonna navigate through this, through this.
Really?
Yes.
Did he use a map?
He, he used iPhone.
Okay, all right, a little different.
And we did great. It was, it was an adventure and it.
Congratulations, you got there and back.
But, yeah, without any trouble. It was amazing. But it is, it is really hard to find bus drivers to do that. So be a bus driver. Get, it's a front row seat to an adventure. So we can all get our bus driver license and we'll just load up all the kids and take them. No? Right after we go get that mouse over there, right? But, yeah, I just, that, I guess we'll just call that my highlight for the week and I'll move on to, to Ms. Cave so we can get away from the mouse.
And were you done?
Oh.
Mr. Cross? Oh my gosh.
Got something on my leg. It's a cord.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Cross, but he's probably hoping we wrap this up soon.
We're about, about done.
No, we're not. I would just add one more thing to that and I think when we, when we implement those types of things locally, then we don't need things like Governor Yonkin's executive orders. You know what I'm saying? Like when we, when we start, you know, putting those things in our requirements and our curriculums and just in our everyday interactions with each other and with our students, like then we've got Rockingham County that, that knows better. So we don't need the governor, no matter who's in the governor's mansion, to tell us, like this is the right thing to do. So that's just final comment on that. Oh gosh, now I'm ready. You sure you're done, Jackie? Okay. Uh, no, I've just, I've got notes all over the place, so I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to remember where I was gonna start at. And this is silly, I have three things on my list tonight, but it's not silly. And I think I mentioned it maybe last September and now we're in May, but I literally put a note in my phone to remind me in May to tell you that I had a lot of parents that were, they were upset because the supply list came out, really what they felt to be late last year. And I'm just saying, I remember a day when it felt like I saw the supply list come out and I'm like, good God, we're in June, you know? And the supply list was out. So I just want to tell you that I'm just, I'm being, don't, don't look at me like that. I'm just, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger. That was the message, that they wanted the supply list as soon as possible, but.
They want it before school's out or?
I mean, I hope not, you know? I don't know, I don't know when they want it, they just wanted it sooner than last year. I don't know who's in charge of that, but, you know?
Okay.
And it may have been fine and normal, but anyways, graduation season is upon us. Not upon us, like we are fully into it. And, oh, I know where I wanted to go before I talked about that. Retirement. We had our retirement celebration for a ton of employees this evening here at Broadway High School. And one of the things that this board does is some of us go somewhere and some, some of us go to other places and we've sort of had to divide and conquer. And so I don't know who all was here for the Broadway celebration. I actually attended Mrs. Schaefer's retirement celebration, which was right in District Five, and she's retiring from McGeeksville Elementary School and she is just loved in the school and just loved in the community and I'm just very thankful for her and all of our retirees. And I just wanted to send out a congratulations and, you know, those, we just, I just sort of had to drop in and come out just to, you know, be able to get here on time tonight. And sometimes those whirlwind visits and drop-ins at places feel, they don't feel authentic, I guess I would say. But I just, I want everyone to know that I am genuinely interested in everything that goes on our, on in our schools from field trips to assemblies to retirement, you know, retirement celebrations and graduations and all of those things. So I just congratulate all of our retirees and thank you for all your hard work here. I started talking about graduation. I always look forward. I think one of my favorite things about graduation is the speeches that come. And I get excited when I listen to them. I love to hear a good graduation speech and they don't really bother me if they're short or long, like as long as they motivate me, I, I'm there for it. And so I want it to be things that motivate students and, and take for example, our very own Dr. Shiflett's speech to our governor's school just a couple of weeks back was just awesome and I sat there just taking notes through the things. I'm like, I'm going to apply. And, you know, and he talked about time and how, how we invest it. Do we spend it? Do we waste it? He didn't say that, but do we waste it? And, or do we invest it? And, you know, investing always causes a return and he just had all these wonderful things and I left there feeling really good. And so that's sort of what I want for every student at our graduations. Like I want them feeling like they're, they're leaving with something that they didn't come with. And a graduation speech should uplift, exhort, admonish, prepare, and motivate, all those things. And so graduation speech, I don't, no student should ever feel minimized by any graduation speech. And so I just wanted to take a quick second to, you know, I don't know if I just need to say to Dr. Shiflett, just to make sure that all of our high school principals have covered bases with all the graduation speakers as to what's appropriate in our graduation speech. There, there was an anti-Semitic remark made. It's interesting that you're talking about the Holocaust tonight, Mr. Cross, but there was an anti-Semitic remark made last year and it really bothered me and honestly, publicly, we did not talk about it. And had it been any other people group besides Jews, we would have heard all about it and we would have talked about it in public. And I'm not talking about the school board, I'm just, I'm talking about everybody. But nothing was really said and I feel like as a public servant, a publicly elected official, that I'm given a voice for those that don't have a voice or for those that don't use it or for those that can't use it. And so my request just to Dr. Shiflett and to all four of our high school principals is that you have taken pause and time to speak with these speakers so that they know that we don't support that type of thing in Rockingham County, that we want our graduation speeches to be all of the things that I talked about a few, a few minutes ago. And I appreciate that. And then one other thing, and I, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Cross, and we didn't really talk about this ahead of time, but I've had a lot of people in my community come and talk to me about the Elkton Middle School addition. And one of the things that was brought up to me is that the new addition is going to come out over the current ball field. And in our community, it's a big deal. And so, Dr. Shiflett, I had asked you a few weeks ago some questions about it and, and, you know, is it going to come out over the ball field? And you had told me yes. And I think maybe the last word between us was, I was asking about, I hadn't been down to the bottom of the hill in quite some time. I didn't know how much land we have down there. Is there any talks about, and maybe before you answer that, I wanted to ask Mr. Cross something, but is there any talks about relocating that field? It's greatly used. In fact, my son's on it tonight practicing. And I'm not asking for him, like he's only eight, so it's not like a great big deal, but it is in the community. But a few weeks ago, I had talked to Mr. Cross about it and you had given me some really interesting history on that field. Do you mind to share? Because I will not share it as beautifully as you did with me. Do you, do you have a minute to?
I don't know how beautiful it'd be, but I'll share it.
Eloquently.
I will say that the lower field drains, it's one of the best draining fields, baseball fields in the county still. It was used back in the, when it was a high school. And it's kind of used now, although it's not, it would need to have some, to be fixed up. But the community down there uses the middle school almost all year round. If you go down there throughout, all summer long and throughout the fall, spring, and winter, almost time, you'll see someone on those baseball fields, especially where we're looking to expand going outward. So many moons ago, I was the president of Elkton Little League and no one give a shout out or pat on the back, but I was president of Elkton Little League, learned a lot of things, met a lot of great people. One of the things that we did, we did a fundraiser that year and we, we raised enough funds to fix up that field there. I went to Dr. Pence, at the time I was a school resource officer there, and went to Dr. Pence on behalf of Elkton Little League and I got permission to be able on behalf of the Elkton Little League, and I got permission to be able to put the backstop up there. And we, the Elkton Little League, really, I wanted to do something special, not only for our kids, but also for Dr. Pence. At the time, many of you understand or know that worked for RCPS, that Dr. Pence lost a daughter to cancer, and she worked for the Baltimore Orioles. And so, in making the backstop there, the board down at Elkton Little League, one of the things that we did to make it special is, well, we, I called the Baltimore Orioles organization, and I asked them specifically what was the kind of brick that was used for the Baltimore Orioles' backstop. And they gave me the company that made the actual bricks for their backstop at Orioles at Candleman Yards. And Elkton Little League called the company and got the bricks from that exact people that make the bricks there. And so, their backstop there, if you go to Elkton Middle School, the backstop on their side field there is really beautiful, but that is the actual bricks. If you go to Candleman Yards, that's gonna be the same exact bricks. And one special thing that the Elkton Community League did was gave Dr. Pence a brick out of the pallet as a souvenir for her and, and for her daughter.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dr. Shiflett, did you find out anything more since we?
So, currently, the addition would go into that part of the field. I don't know exactly how far it would go into the field. I'm sure it would probably make it unusable. But I did have a conversation this morning with Mayor Joshua Gooden from the town of Elkton, and he was sharing with me that, because I brought this up, you know, about at some point, we hoped to do an addition, and then what's gonna be the impact on the field. And he was saying on the other side, and I haven't seen this, there is an old baseball field that could potentially be used. I don't know what kind of shape that's in. And then, he also said that the town owns property all around there, that maybe there'd be an opportunity to expand. I guess my question would be, you know, is that something that the school board is going to want to purchase, a baseball field for a community little league, right? I mean, for the, the school's not currently, I don't think, using that field as a baseball diamond. So, I think that would just be the question for our school board. Is that something they want to invest dollars in, right?
I, I would, I would suggest that we possibly look at what it would cost to, and I don't think it would cost a lot of money at all to get the lower field that the school used and that they still use for practice, but it wouldn't only benefit the community there for Elkton Little League, but it would benefit the, our high school kids and for our JV team. So, right now, they use, most of the time, they'll split fields, or the town field is usually having to have certain times when they can and cannot practice on the town field as well. So, if they go down to the sixty-niney ball field, down to the town field, they, they have to split between Little League and also other organizations. But I don't think it would cost much money at all to get field dirt and put it down there. It's, like, again, it drains, it's still one of the best draining fields, baseball fields around.
And you're talking about down at the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, it wouldn't cost, it wouldn't be much of an investment from the school and division to fix that field up to be a playing field. It wouldn't cost much at all.
That's all I have.
Lots of good discussion tonight. I want to share that Ms. Burgoyne and I have finished all of our school visits for the year. We made it. We, I don't know if I shared this earlier, we thought we would be done in a semester, and it took us all year. And, but we enjoyed it so much. I think we're gonna continue to do these school visits. We, we learned a lot, had some really great conversations, good, hard conversations sometimes, but we learned a lot about our schools and how we can advocate for our students and for our teachers and for our communities. And so, to all of the teachers and staff that met with Ms. Burgoyne and I, thank you for doing that. And I realize that sometimes it can be, you know, maybe uncomfortable to sit and talk with a school board member, but I hope that we, we showed you that it was, it's okay to do that and it's okay to share with us what you need. So, we're planning to continue that next year. The other, well, two other things. I will just say, this is the time of year for lots of end of the year celebrations. I love that. We have CTE celebrations, FFA banquets, band music, choir, sports recognitions. And I, I just want to say, I love that we have so many different opportunities for our students to find, find their thing, find something that they're good at and, and be recognized for that. And then, the last thing I want to highlight is the Turner Ashby Chamber Choir. They had quite an honor, and I was thrilled and privileged to get an invite to go along with them. They traveled, they were invited by the Virginia Department of Education to sing as, as their, part of their opening for a board meeting down in Richmond. And so, they prepared two beautiful pieces and went down and sang before the Board of Education. They, I could read to you all of the amazing things that I did not know about this choir, but they have been selected for a number of things like the Summer Residential Governor's School for Visual and Performing Arts and Humanities. They win awards wherever they go. And, I mean, if you listened to them, it really, it was angelic, it was beautiful. But I want to highlight to, you know, Mr. Dively, the choral director, was also selected as the music director for the All-State Musical Production. And then, I think this is really cool, because if you think about, you know, we're approaching our nation's 250th anniversary of America's independence. And that'll be next year in the summer, and the TA Chamber Choir has been invited to perform at an event in Boston next May as part of that celebration. And I think that's, we have a lot of schools and a lot of choirs doing, and bands and fine arts programs doing a lot of amazing things. And this is just a highlight of what one of the really cool honors that...
Say, Boston?
Boston.
There'd be dumping tea?
Field trip.
Dumping tea?
Well, I don't know.
I'll go.
Maybe we'll see some reenactments of, of the Boston Tea Party, which was not a party. Well...
Throw some tea into the haba.
Something along those lines. They'll be singing. So, anyway, thrilled that we have so many great opportunities for students and excited for all of the things that the Turner Ashby Chamber Choir has accomplished in the last several years. So, with that, we do have reason to...
On, I just want to add to, I did have a parent reach out to me. I wanted to remind you that at Plains Elementary School, there were some teachers there that you and Ms. Burgoyne missed. And so, I don't know if, if you've gotten back with them or not, but I just wanted to remind you about that.
I became aware of that. We've only heard from one teacher who said, hey, your sign-up sheet was, was filled up. And she reached out to us in email, and I went back out and met with her. And so, I don't know who to go out and meet with if they don't email me. So, I would just, I would just suggest, you know, if, and we have said that, and I'm glad you're saying that, I'll maybe send a message to that principal and just let him know we'll be willing to come back out again. But we, we were not aware that there were more until the one reached out, and that was the only one we heard from. So, back out to Plains I went and had a great visit, excuse me, with that teacher. Yeah, yeah. But I don't know that I got to all of the ones that maybe you're referring to. So, if you know who those are, encourage them to send me an email.
I don't know if there was, no, I don't know if there was many. I just know that they had, they had reached out, and I said I would ask.
Very receptive to coming to your classroom and meeting with you one-on-one. Just send me an email so we can schedule it. So, okay, if there's nothing further, we do have reason to enter into a closed meeting tonight. Usually, we do try to get that done beforehand, but we were celebrating retirees, and so now we need to move into closed meeting. Do I have a motion to do so?
I move the board to enter into a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering personnel matters including assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salary disciplining, or resignation of specific employees. The subject matter is board action pertaining to specific employees. I also move that the board enter into a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19 for the purpose of discussion of information subject to exclusion in subdivision two or four of 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety of, the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software program, and discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons such as facility, building, or structure. The subject matter is safety enhancements at RCPS, RCPS schools, including school cameras.
Thank you, Ms. Lorr. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Motion passes four zero. We are now in closed session. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Appreciate your time. Have a good evening.